I'm asking if you will stand with us. We'll open with a word of prayer. And then we'll be called about to pledge allegiance. And I'm going to ask the Councilor Tucker, she'll lead us in a word of prayer.
Father, we just want to thank you for this day and all that's come out. Lord, just help us to make good decisions for our city as we've always tried to do, being with our people. Lord, I pray that people come out and vote. They need to come out and support our city and our city council and our new mayor. We thank you for the blessings. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. And we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll allow anyone from the audience that would like to come and address the council with any kind of an issue or... Now, you're on the agenda, so is it something different?
No.
Now, you're on the agenda.
Okay.
You'll be on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, and you're on the agenda.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't think I'm on the agenda.
Okay, sure.
Are you coming here?
Yes, I'm on the agenda. If you would, just state your name and your address.
Okay. My name's Rachel Dossie. I'm with the North Alabama Agriplex. And our address is 1714 Tally Ho Street, Coleman, Alabama. So, I appreciate that you're letting me come. I'm the executive director at the Agriplex. I just wanted to thank you for your support in the past years. Just tell you a little bit about what we're doing. We're asking for appropriations again. Hopefully, y'all have been to visit us before there. We're working on a new building right now, a community hub and teaching kitchen that we're really excited to be able to offer for the community. When we get the new building built, hopefully in February, we'll also become the home for the Coleman County Extension, that will be the home for 4H and Master Gardeners as well. Currently, we do outreach to schools. We were at the Hampsville Ave this week. And we try to work with the community, with our military veterans and beginning farmers as well. So, we're going to keep continuing what we're doing and we hope that you will continue to support us. So, just wanted to say thank you and that's all? That's it?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll ask a clerk. She'll call the roll.
Councilor Stam?
Here.
Councilor Dean Tucker?
Here.
Councilor Ness?
Here.
Mayor Froten Brown?
Here.
Councilor Cornelius?
Here.
Mayor Sawyer?
Here.
Can I make a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion when the second agenda is presented.
I'll say that.
First, a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor, let them say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, we need to have an open, public hearing for the purpose of rezoning a couple of pieces of property. The first property is to rezone the Burton property. That'd be ordinance number 2025-4. This property is located on Elm Street where Tennessee and Alabama Avenue, you know, connect. It's right now Zone R1, which is low-density residential, and they're asking to rezone that to R3, which is high-density residential. And the second piece of property is... And let me go back. That, I think I did mention, that is the Burton property, the 2025-4. The second piece of property is 1122 LLC, ordinance number 2025-5. And this property is located at Holwell Road and Style Street. Nolan Bradford, if I understand, this property is located at the dead end of Style Street. Is that correct? At the very end of Styles?
In the Style Street, take a left, and it's about 100 yards up on the right.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. But that property there's also Zone R1, low-density, and they're asking to have that rezoned to R2, which is medium-density. So, at this time, we'll ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak for or against this rezoning. Okay? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll get right into our new business. Item number one is bill approval. You have the bills presented to you for payment. Do I have a motion on that?
Make a motion when paid the bills.
Certainly. Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the invoices that have been presented for payment. All those in favor, let them say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two is our invoice for Hickam Botham Insurance Agency. This is our annual liability insurance premium. It's a little bit cheaper than it has been the last couple of years. Of course, you know, it doesn't include anything to do with the police department. But this bill is actually doing payable in the amount of $185,829.
Do they all do it one time or do they split it?
I don't think they... You can answer that. Maybe I don't think they split it.
No.
I think it's just one-time payment, which we got the money in savings, I guess. We'd probably take it out of the savings account and pay it. We have done that in the past. We have paid it out of quarter, but, you know...
More expensive.
Yeah.
More expensive premium.
More expensive, yeah.
For their savings.
We got the money to pay it and... Because that's a pretty big payment every quarter that we have to make.
I make a motion that we pay the invoice for Hickam Botham Insurance for $185,829.
Certainly.
Okay, we have a motion to pay this insurance premium. All those in favor? Let them say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three is ordinance number 2025-4, the Burton properties. They're asking to rezone this property from R1 residential to R3 residential. We've already had the first reading. This will be the second reading. So, we'll need a roll call vote for this. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number 2025-4 Burton property.
A second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. We'll need a roll call vote.
Councilor Stam?
Yes.
Councilor Dean Tucker?
Yes.
Councilor Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Froten Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Cornelius?
Yes.
Mayor Sawyer?
Yes.
Okay, item number five is ordinance 2025-5, 1122 LLC, asking to rezone the property residential 1 to residential 2 on Holwell Road and Style Street. This also is the second reading, so we'll need a motion to vote on this ordinance.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-5.
Certainly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll need a roll call vote.
Councilor Stam?
Yes.
Councilor Dean Tucker?
Yes.
Councilor Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Froten Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Cornelius?
Yes.
Mayor Sawyer?
Yes.
Okay, item number five, the Christmas parade, and Civitans have asked for this. We go right ahead and miss talking.
Okay. As most people know, the Hampsville Civitan Club always does the Coleman County Christmas Parade. This will be the 36th annual. We've always started at Wallace. However, last year, they had the State Robotics Competition, and several things went on the campus of Wallace at the time. So, what we're going to try to do this year is we wanted to try to use CWA Park as our staging area and come up Michelle Street, down 31, and those that can, as always, go down in the nursing home and then come down to Park Street, and we'll end over around Veterans Park. And we've already got permission from the school to use their parking lots for pickup. And the date is December the 6th. So, I guess what we're asking for is permission to use CWA Park to stage as our staging area and then to be able to complete at Veterans Park. And we also have our pencil trail at Veterans Park during this time set up, but also kind of bring some more traffic in that way as well.
Going to start at 12:00, as usual?
Yes. We normally do line up at 10:00 and then we start at 12:00. And another thing, doing it that way, it's going to bring the parade right by Monarch Place, so those people can enjoy the parade as well and be able to see it.
I make a motion that we allow the Civitans to use CWA Park to stage the Christmas parade, close Michelle Street during the parade, also close Park Street during the parade and end at Veterans Park.
Certainly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let them say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
There is none. Thank you.
Item number six, Mayor Froten Brown would like to talk about council committees.
I had this put on there because I would ask that. We talk about reinstating the committees that exist with each council seat. The council member concerned is a liaison between the department head and the council so that we are informed of what's going on in each department and so that we can inform one another if there's issues that come up or if there's concerns that people have. And I think that probably needs to take place prior to the new council taking office so that they will know who they are to liaison with. Place number three is parks. You have fire, we have police, for public safety, we have street, and then we also have the budget. So, I think we need to really go back to that and so that we can be more informed and to be more connected to the departments that we have here. So, that's just a consideration.
So, we can table that? To have a motion we table, do you have a motion?
Make a motion we table, yes.
No, second. Okay, have a motion and a second to table. You'll be on the agenda at next meeting. All those in favor, let them say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, the last item of new business is a Hampsville Hope Food Pantry. Mr. Stam, Councilman Stam had this on here. Would you like to sort of fill us in a little bit on what this is about? And then we will allow Deborah Stam and Teresa Rivera to come and speak.
Yes. Our biggest support in City of Hampsville, LP Building Solutions, has approached Hope Pantry to see about what they can do as far as in a community service and help us as far as distribution through... So, they looked at how we're storing food, what our needs are. We've been storing food with permission from previous librarian in the back room for about the past three, four years. But we got to where we need more space. There used to be three churches that had food pantries, but since COVID, they've all closed. So, we're the only ones that are supplying food to those in need.
Trinity Pentecostal has one.
Who?
Trinity Pentecostal on 91.
Okay. All right. So, then that would be two. But for the past year, three, well, we've been involved in for the past seven years. And so, you'd be surprised of the families and people that are in need and appreciate food that's available. In the past, my wife and I would go to one of the major supermarkets on Christmas Eve, Easter Eve, Thanksgiving, and we'll load up our car, our SUV, full with bread, cakes, pies, and we distribute some of it that night. Then some of it, we save. We have... There's cooperation with the Church of Good Hope that they have provided their refrigeration to keep some of it. We've also shared some of it with Coleman Food Pantry right there by...
Mayor Cornelius?
Mayor Carter Pantry. So, it's a service, a community service, that's really in need for the city. And it's about having compassion, to give back to some of those. And you'd be surprised how thankful some of these people are. We've also had donations as far as clothing. And one time, I had some extra clothing and my wife put it out there. And a person, a lady came up, she said, "You don't know how much I appreciate this." My husband needed some pants for work, and he needed a decent pair. So, you'd be surprised about people, how thankful they are that this outreach service is doing. So, it's come about where we've come with some stipulations with the library board, and there were four stipulations that we both agreed to. And so, lately, what we have, LP has come out, they've measured the little room that's drive-through window as far as adding shelving. They're also going to add a solar power refrigeration unit there so we can keep food in there and keep it fresh. In the past, we've had to come out and there will be some people that will come to the little pantry box and they will take everything out. So, to try to control that, we have volunteers that will go and they will fill it up at different times of the day so nobody will come and swipe it. And so, some of that food's been stored at the back of the library in this little room. So, what we're asking to control, be controlled of that little room, that the wall, there's one big wall there, and that would be for food where it's not in a, I guess, any conflict with the library, is that where we, the food pantry, would have that room itself. There's ample room for the library to move other stuff, like basically Christmas items, other stuff into their store rooms or vaults. There's ample room in that. That would be probably helpful, maybe in the future, we can get LP to see if that adding shelving is there. But right now, we only have a little bit in that room, and so we really need the extra space for storage. With King's Clothing, they've also said that they could donate maybe some bedding, some clothing. So, that's reason also for the extra shelving for stuff like that that may come up. We would use a little bake drawer basically to distribute the food out to the people that come up and need. So, this is the request. LP just scheduled, they have a committee team, and they have a downtime where they put together for the 28th of this month that they would come and complete this project for us. And so, that's reason why we're looking to bring this up to the board, to the city council for approval, for Hope Pantry to have full control of that room. It is a city building. It's not the library. The library's in that building also. So, this is a small portion of that city building that has full control. It used to be a police dispatch room. So, the library didn't have control over it in the past. They basically took it over when the police department dispatch moved out. They just used it for storage. So, it's not really necessary for them to have that.
Okay, so, the reason this is on the agenda, as Councilor Stam stated, you know, the building is owned by the city, but it's occupied by the library. This back room, is there storage room or is being used as a storage room? So, the question is, should, is the library the right place for this food pantry? There's a disagreement. And so, Deborah Stam is going to come and she's going to speak and give her reasons why she feels like that this would be good for their group to have this food place. And then Teresa Rivera, which is the library manager, she's going to come and speak.
And Lacy.
Okay, and Lacy... Lacy Grill, who is the secretary of the library board, okay? So, Deborah, if you would, if you'll come to the podium there, share with us what you have.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to address all of the council members and thank you for all your service for all these years. It was great. We've been here nine years.
Can everybody hear back there? Okay? Can you hear? Okay. Good.
Okay. All right. Basically, for about six or seven years, volunteers have been storing food in their cars. And that's how we load up the pantry, just driving through there four or five times a day. And recently, LP Solutions contacted me, I think it was February this year, and they said, "We donate from that little pantry." And they asked me about it. And I said, "Yep." I said, "Good project." And they said, "Well, our teams get together and vote on a charity once a year, and we've chosen your pantry because we know what it does and we want to support it." And I said, "Wow, that's great. You know, what are you thinking?" "We're thinking about putting refrigeration for you." Well, honestly, the vandalism that's happened at that little box, we felt like someone might steal this refrigeration because it is portable. So, I always looked over at the drive-through there every time I'd go there. And it was a dream of mine, wouldn't it be great if it's a drive-through? And we could just open the drawer and dispense to the people. Because I have a lot of people, I have a book and I keep for people, and I know people that have cancer and that have no teeth and that have conditions that need certain kind of food. And I put that aside, and when I see them, I give it to them. But it's happenstance because they come when they can, I come when I can. And the drive-through would give us an opportunity to have a book there, and when someone comes through, you know, pull out that pudding and give it to them. There's a lot of people that don't cook because they don't have the facilities or because, you know, they're just walking up there. And a lot of them come from the center over there that's low housing, you know, the city housing. And they depend on this food, and they don't cook. They just weren't... I mean, I had gone there before and people have opened a can and consumed it right there. So, I have a heart for this. So, I was so excited when LP finally came out and they said, "Where do you keep your food?" So, took them back there and they looked around, and basically, we kept our stuff on a table that Philip Purdy came in one day and gave us. Because he came back there and he could see we didn't really have any storage. He said, "What do you need?" I said, "We could really use a table." So, he brought us a really nice table, and we've used that for sorting and everything, but it's pretty tight. So, we used to keep our stuff... There's a room before that, and we'd keep our stuff there. But then, one day, the high school had drive, and they had like 40 boxes they donated at once. And, you know, we were overwhelmed. And so, Shirley says, "Why don't you put them in the back of the storage room? We're not using it for, you know, anything really." And I said, "Really?" She said, "Yeah, I was wondering why you haven't asked me before. Go ahead," you know? So, we would go through that back door, load, unload. It was really lifted a burden. Because, you know, a lot of our volunteers were not spring chickens. You know, one lady just had surgery on her shoulder, the minister's wife. And she goes to her church and brings food. And she uses her freezer. And she's back and forth, back and forth. But we have to go through the front of the library all the way to the back. And if we have big boxes or whatever, because they don't like us using the back door. So, you know, we comply. Although Shirley kept it open, you know, we always use that. So, that was, you know, a bit of a problem. But the other volunteers, you know, we have three churches that we work with, and they stored their facilities. So, really, the main thing that I would like to see is I have a staff of volunteers ready to go to work certain days at that drive-through, to sit down and to dispense the food. And someone says, "Well, why are you there?" Well, because the little box that's right close to us has the donations, and we depend on about half of our donations from people stopping by and putting them in. And we try to get them out quickly before they're all gone. And then we store them for the people's needs. So, that's why we want to be there, because if you go on Facebook or you go on Google, Hampsville Hope Pantry shows there. That's where it is. And my vision is to post on the back where the drive-through is, you know, "This is the Hampsville Hope Pantry, and these are the hours that we're going to be there." And, you know, put on the bottom, "Do not go into the library." This, you know, make it clear. This is the pantry. This is the drive-through. And when we're not open, we're going to still fill up that little, they call it the blessing box, because we have insecurity here, food insecurity. And there's people at night that come that are, you know, it's just too ashamed to come here in the day. And we want food in there for them. So, we've got to keep the 24-hour thing going. So, but we still need an opportunity to get our food into there. Now, when the board met, we waited, you know, I worked, I was working with LP, and I said, "Well, we have to go through, I have to go talk to, you know, city council." So, I did mention it to city council. And they said, "Okay." But it was the night that we had the big talk at the civic center. So, I don't know if anybody remembers that I was there. So, everything was go fat. Then, there was a board meeting at the library. So, we had to wait. I think it's four times a year or whatever. So, they met, and then I was told, "You have the okay." But stipulations are, we don't want vagrants or homeless people in, coming in there. You know, I'm thinking, for four to seven years, we've had the same staff, which we gave the names to the librarian. These are upright people. Their minister's wives, their doctor that has their daughter going to Hampsville School, myself. And I'm wondering, you know, why that was mentioned. But we, you know, are really responsible people as far as going through the back door and keeping it, whatever. So, I said, "You can't go through the back door, so that means we have to go through the front all the way back." That was a stipulation. The other one was, "You can't be open when the library's not open. And you cannot ask the staff to help you or answer questions or be a part of it at all." Well, I understood that for, you know, insurance purposes. They're not part of the, you know, we're not part of the library, they're not part of us. They are employees, you know, part-time or whatever. So, I said, "Sure, you know, I wouldn't..." You know, I had no problem with that. So, we, I contacted, after I got approval from the board, I contacted LP, and she said, "Well, let me, it's going to take a couple of weeks because our team has to get together. There's a lot of coordination going on." And I said, "We can't come on Wednesday because the children come, we can't come on Monday because they're closed." And that's the only stipulation I gave her. So, she gave me the date of the 28th, and she says, "It works out perfect for our team. The materials are ready. We have all the things to complete this project for Hope Pantry." And I knew, I was thrilled. So, I always text the librarian, Teresa, all the emails that I got. And so, she came back and said, "Nope, can't do it that day because I'm not working." Well, I know she's part-time, and I know that sometimes they switch their schedules. And I, so I told her, I said, "Wait a minute. This is a team. These are men. They're volunteering from 1:00 to the, you know, in the afternoon." this is a team, these are men, they're volunteering from one o'clock to the, you know, in the afternoon. This is a huge deal for this, for us," you know? And she's like, "No, I told you, you can't have it there, you just can't have it." So I guess, at that moment, I realized, and I'm asking you, can we be a separate entity in that dispatch area that has been used by the city for different things? Can we have that as Hope Pantry for the city, for our volunteers to have a place to sit and serve the people, for, you know, a, a place where the cans won't get hot outside or cold, comfortable for everybody? And so I, I guess that's what I'm asking, and the pushback that I got from the library, um, you know, I just feel like I really was kinda blindsided, actually. So, um, I love the pantry, I love the people, and I have a lot of people that agree with me, and, um, I just wanna, you know, continue doing what we've been doing now, it's about nine years now, for that pantry. Y'all have any questions for me?
Is there a way that that room can be locked off from the library?
Yes, there's a door that you enter, and that door has a key, entry. And so what, another thing that I had to mention was, okay, so, I was downtown, you know, the pantry business, and I saw the mayor walking, and, uh, and I asked him, I said, "Give a second, I wanna show you, because, do you realize that they're gonna put panels on this building? I mean, they're gonna be doing some major work, and you know the chute that goes up for the, uh, for the little, uh, bank? You know, it was a bank, it was a merchant's bank, well, the drawer's right there, and there's this chute thing." And so I said to him, I said, uh, "They said, 'Oh, we'll remove that for you, we'll go up and seal it, we'll fix it and everything, we're gonna put the panels on there.'" And then Teresa asked if they could put some cameras out, and, uh, different things like that for security and all. They said, "We could put some, but they, unless you connect them, they're gonna be fake, you know, they'll be cameras." And so, um, so they were going through all that, and, um, they got to the point where they were saying, um, you know, "Is there anything else you need?" Um, so, I think I lost my train of thought there for a second, but, um, I'm gonna hit this.
To answer her question, there are double doors.
Oh, yes.
That, that can be locked to, to, uh, prevent access into the, into the main library. But now, the door, entry door that, that we're speaking about, actually does go into the room where the book sale, where they have the book sale, where they have all the books stored, uh, for sale, because it, it, it joins this back room that they're going to use. So, that's your question, yes, it is blocked off, you can block off going into the main library, but you're still gonna have access into that, to that room that houses the book sale.
Right, the paperbacks.
Yeah, the paperbacks.
And, you know, you know, it's kinda made a comment, we don't look, anybody will steal them, and I'm like, "Okay." Um, I don't know who that was directed at, but, you know, when, when we basically were talking to the mayor, I covered, you know, the drive-through area, I said, "Is this our property line, where, where, if the people drive through, before they get all the work, I wanna be sure that, you know, if I direct people this way with some signs, I'm not gonna be violating anything." So we got that covered. Then I said to him, "One other thing, there was a window inside, I wanted to ask them out." So he comes around, and, uh, it wasn't a formal meeting, it was just happenstance, we saw him, and I said, I said, "Mayor," I said, "There's a little window here," and I said, "If LP can open that for us, will we be able to put things and give people maybe something larger, you know, a gallon of milk or something?" And, you know, if LP will do it, of course, all this is not asking the city to put a penny, this is all done without that. And, uh, you know, so we're talking about that, when Teresa arrived, and really just, I think, got, you know, upset that we're having a meeting without her, and it was going behind her back, and I said.
Deborah, let's, let's sort of stick to the reason.
Well, that, that's where it started, yeah. And I wanted to speak, and I asked you, because I thought you could've wanted to tell me, "Can we open on Mondays to alleviate her, her problems about employees working with us, or being bothered about our thing?" And that's when I said, "Well, how would I get in if the library's closed on Monday?" And we were talking about the back door, and that's when the back door issue started. And then I said, "Well, look, if that means, then forget it, we won't be open on Monday, we'll go back to only being open when the library's open, we won't let vagrants or homeless people in here, and we won't use the back door to carry everything through the main room."
And, and our conversation, um, I thought everything was settled, you know, I didn't even realize there was any kind of a problem or an issue, you know, with y'all using this, so, uh, that, that's where that conversation, you know, went.
One other thing, a problem came up, it was about where the shelves were gonna be. Uh, the librarian says, "No, I, I've gotta have that wall for our stuff," which, if you look at it, most of it really honestly is junk. There's some Christmas decorations that could be easily moved into this vault rooms, which has plenty of room in there. If anything, they could have shelves put in there to be better organized, but, uh, basically being cut off as far as, you know, basically the opportunity where we could store, store food on shelves.
And this, food goes fast, we have an estimate of a thousand cans a week. Think about that for a second. And that's all from our trunks and handcaring, and when the library's closed, we can't get our stuff out. So that's why I wanted access to get in there. So, um, Councilman Tucker, Dean Tucker, uh, there's a door that was for the dispatch by itself. Then you walk out that door, and there's another door that goes outside. Now, what is upstairs? I see stairs going upstairs.
It's, uh, it, it was, it's used for storage, you know, right now.
They do.
It's just.
More storage.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay, all right, thank you, Deborah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Teresa?
Thank you, city council, for allowing us to speak at this meeting. I'm gonna let Lacey start, and then I'll finish up.
Okay, before I read her statement, I do want to point out two things. Um, first of all, we do have hearts. The high school drive that she's speaking of, I led that. I do currently still have food in my middle school library, where my cheerleaders did a drive for the food pantry. So we are not heartless and trying to move away with the pantry. I've led the food drives and stored them myself. Uh, second, there's been no library board meeting where any of, any of this has come up. I've never even met the Stams until tonight, uh, and, and know nothing about LP doing anything to the library.
I wasn't invited to it, they're interrupting, we require.
Well, anyway, there was no library board meeting, I'm the secretary of the library board. Margaret's here, and she's been on the library board for, I don't even know how long, she knows of no meetings. There was no library board meeting at all about using our storage space for the food pantry, um, to be distributed, not just storing food for the pantry, but to, for distribution. So our concerns, the first concern is safety and security at the library. Um, prior to discussions of the food pantry being reimagined as a food bank, operating out of the library's storage room, employees at the library already expressed concern about uncomfortable situations that they're handling currently at the library. Um, we've discussed our most, at our most recent board meeting, removing the COVID plexiglass that's surrounding the front desk to allow more than one escape route if the librarians are cornered behind the desk, which has been done, the plexiglass has been removed. We also asked a representative of our local sheriff's office, Chad Whaley, to meet with our library manager and employees to discuss potential safety issues and how to better be prepared to handle these situations. Most days, the library is staffed with a single female employee that has to check in and out books, monitor the library, the children's room, and the book sale room simultaneously. With that, as you can imagine, a food bank operating out of the back of the library is a concern. Our library manager and her fellow employees are not at all averse to helping the homeless and impoverished populations, and we do not want to be perceived as uncaring and unkind. The initial reason, from our understanding, to move the food pantry to a food bank scenario is because the food pantry is being stripped of its goods as soon as the goods are placed in there. While I learned, while our understanding is that LP will supply cameras, albeit not working, to deter potential problems, that in and of itself should be a clear signal that the food bank operating out the back of the library is a concerning situation, not just our library manager and her coworkers, but even LP has offered this. A second reason is space constraints. Our library, uh, originally designed as a bank and donated to the city by a merchant's bank to be used for a library, um, has very little space for storage. It, we participate in the Mud Creek Festival, the Christmas parade, sundry local events, uh, we've acquired a lot of supplies for these things, signage, decorations, which enable us to actively support the growing community. If you haven't visited the library, I would ask that, before you make any decisions, you swing by and check it out, see the storage areas that she speaks of. And in light of the very soon to be closing mission, it was mentioned that we may have to store clothing and blankets, and we just simply don't have the extra space. So, we did come up with some potential solutions. It's our understanding that Mayor Sager offered a room at the Hansville Civic Center, which has ample space, and it was deemed unfit. But what was it about that meeting place that was unfit? Also, in light of the fact that the water department will soon be moving to a new building, would another potential solution be the current water department building? It has a drop box similar to what we have, um, the building is larger, it would offer more space necessary for food bank items, clothing, blankets, anything needed arises, and the building would allow the food bank to grow, um, whereas it cannot grow in our current storage room. So all in all, uh, we pray that there's a resolution to the solution that allows for the growth and expansion of both the library and the food bank, while preserving the safety and security for anyone involved. And we do thank the Stams for their big hearts, uh, we thank the library manager and her coworkers for their service to the community, and we recognize that people experiencing poverty and homelessness constitute a significant portion of users in libraries today. And this population provides libraries with an opportunity to change lives. With the number of poor children, adults, and families that rise, so does the urgent need for libraries to respond to their needs, and we will continue to provide access to library and information services, uh, technologies, and things essential for all people, especially economically disadvantaged.
Thank you, Lacey.
You're welcome.
Okay. Before I get started, let me ask Amber Thornton, the, uh, director of the Coleman County Public Library to stand, and with her is Margaret, who also serves on our board. Margaret is our secretary, and.
Treasurer.
Treasurer, I'm sorry. And Pam is also a staff member at our library, who's also, they have all expressed concerns, um, about the situation. So first of all, I wanna thank you for listening, for your consideration, and I want you to know that it's been an extreme honor to serve at the library for the past five years. I appreciate the opportunity to voice our concerns regarding the food pantry distribution. We have seen extreme growth in library patrons and continue to look forward to serving the Hansville community. The storing of supplies began several years ago when Mrs. Shirley Burton, our former manager, uh, was approached about the food pantry. She gave them permission to store the food to be used in the little pantry outside. This is very small closet space, it, it, uh, measures about a hundred and four square feet. We have very limited room for our own use. We serve a large community of families with children that attend the weekly Wednesdays Children's Programs. Over the summer, we had over four hundred and fifty children and families. We want to keep our little library safe for the staff as well as children. It is known that when an economically challenged population enters the area for free food, then increased theft and sexual offenders enter the area as well. Our staff is part-time and work alone by themselves. The funds are not available in the city council budget to increase staff, so that more than one person can work a shift at a time. With the food pantry, we would be inundated with phone calls and additional traffic of people looking for free food and asking questions when we have library patrons to take care of. We have already seen this happen with just being a storage facility. For example, people come into the library to complain about the out-of-date food placed there. The food volunteers have messes, have left messes in the storage area that they use, and we have had to clean up after them, which is additional work for our staff. We are a public library, not a food pantry. Even if food would be given out on a Monday when we are closed, and impoverished people would continue to visit us during the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, while the children's program is going on on Wednesday. We recommend other city property, like the new space opening up with a drive-through window at the old Hansville Water and Sewer Department building, this holds a kitchen area. The size of this building is very large and offers a, a lot of, of space, I would, my guesstimate would be it's over fifteen hundred square feet, and that, and that building can store blankets and clothing. A sign out front would give plenty of exposure for Louisiana Pacific and the food bank. They already have signage in place that just needs to be updated for LP and the food bank. They can get plenty of exposure there to serve this population. They have a working drawer that opens and closes, that will allow one bag of food at a time with an open drive-through for cars. Why compete with patrons visiting, patrons visiting the library when there's additional locations that do not have other people being served? The month of July, we had a hu, nine hundred and thirty people walk through the library. The month of May, we had nine hundred and seventeen, and y'all have this in your packet. These, um, so, other options include the civic center, which due to time constraints, I won't go into that. That's like over two hundred square feet for a room, they have a kitchen in there as well. The senior center, which is closed every afternoon at one. These properties will allow them to be open more than one day a week. I am, um, the library board, Coleman County Public Library, and Lieutenant Chad Whaley with the Coleman County Sheriff Office, his letter is in the packet, join me today in solidarity with these concerns. We will, um, in summary, as a community library, we have to look at the entire picture of serving the entire local Hansville community, not just one group. We care about helping the impoverished in the area, um, and we have all volunteered ourselves. Uh, we appreciate the Stams for their dedication to the food pantry, and only wish them success. Any questions?
I guess my question is, what makes you think that the water board would open that building for them?
I have no idea, I'm, I'm asking that if you looked into that, that empty building? That empty building, because there's.
It just says they said they were gonna use it for storage, they may not mind.
It's not part of the city.
No, it's not.
They may not mind.
That's, they're, they're on end, they're not, we have no control over that.
Any other questions? We, I know you've heard a lot, uh.
Thank you for your time and your concern.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mayor, I had, just wanna, uh, inform, inform the council that I did a little research, and did you know that Gardendale has a pantry inside their, uh, library? And it's a huge trend that libraries now have seen that there's a need for food, and there's, you go online, and that it's. and they, they're all opening up their library in a special spot for food pantries. So we're just kind of, we're ahead of the game.
Much larger. So, much larger.
All right. You've heard a lot of, yes, ma'am.
I just want to say something. I, I'm just here a little over a year in Hansville, and I am so proud that the community wants to support the homeless, the hungry, because they have no options. They have no options, so we have to provide the options. I hope this is resolved. I really do. I will be first in line to support it and to help in any way I can. Because if you've ever been, you know, I've been in big cities where there are homeless people, where there are hungry people. They stand out, pan, uh, on the street. They take, you know, they cause all kinds of problems. I haven't seen that here. I thought it was kind of under control. But apparently, as it's growing, we need to, it needs to expand. So I am so proud of these two people that have taken the, taken the initiative. And I hear good things from the library people, too. They want it, want it to work. Please find a solution, because we have people here who are hungry and who will come, they're not just looking for free food. They're looking for, to satisfy their hunger. And that is a big deal in the world today, as you know. We see panhandlers out there all the time, but not in Hansville. I haven't seen one panhandler. Now, maybe I'm not going the right places, but I really do, I, I see the damage that they can do to, to a city. And we're small here, so please help them find a place to put their pantry. People will come. Volunteers will come. Not a problem. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all on the same page as far as...
That's right.
As wanting to support a pantry. It's just coming to, like you say, coming to some kind of a compromise or finding the right place. So council members, you've got a lot of information tonight. I don't know if it's something you need to, you know, to try to digest all of it, if you're ready to make some kind of a decision or if it's something you need to think about. But we'll make some kind of a motion.
Mayor Sollinger, Pam have a statement?
Okay, sure, Pam.
Okay. I'm Henry. Taught at Hansville for five years, so I'm well acquainted with the socioeconomics of this town. And I have been on the library board in the past, and I am an employee of the library. When you're in there by yourself, you never know who's going to be coming through that door. I know myself, I had a young man when I first started. I was there by myself that day. He walked right up to the door, took his hoodie, put it over his head, walked in the door, very slowly walked around the perimeter, stopped right in front of me, picked up a book, looked through it, and it was like a fiction book, turned around and walked very slowly, the same path that he made, walked outside and put his hoodie off. Now, there's other things that I'm not willing to talk about that have happened to me. So I really am concerned about our safety when we're there by ourselves. That is my only concern. I've given and I've worked at food banks for years, but this is a concern for our safety. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Pam. And you realize we, we don't have any kind of a motion. It's asked for the lack of motion.
I, I understand your concern. Number one, we do not have a police department.
Yes, we don't have a panic button. We have nothing to protect ourselves.
We can't have panic button and have a police.
I will, and I will add this. Lieutenant Whaley came today, and he spoke with us about different ways that we could protect ourselves, but really there isn't in the library. And, you know, like I said, there's not a panic button. And if you're in there by yourself, you are the Lone Ranger. I mean, and that's just the bottom line is... And I have had people come in and ask about the food pantry before. So, you know, this is a difficult decision, I know. But think about your employees, is what I would ask, in addition to our community. Because, you know, my, my daughter will tell you, I didn't sleep at night worrying about my students, whether they were fed or not. And then to be approached like this, I'm sorry. I'm very caring, and I am compassionate, and I do give. But I also want to be safe where I work at, or as safe as possible where I work at.
Officer, offer is the civic center. So the offer for the storage.
Well, we've got two. We've got two rooms there at the civic center that are, are just pretty basically being used as storage. We looked at both of them. The contents could be distributed with some, some other place. But that, that idea just didn't seem to, to really work.
The problem is the, even if the water department made it available, they're not gonna be moving for a while.
Well, you know, there's a little bitty book there near the library. Why is it near the library? So they can go out there and refresh it and watch it. Why do I want to be by our pantry? So I can watch it, I can take out, I can put in. And our volunteers can use the drawer, and it's comfortable drive-through. Everybody loves a drive-through. You know, we're not even anywhere near the other side of the library. It's another street over. So there's always people coming back there for that pantry. I just feel like that's another issue altogether about their safety that has nothing to do with the pantry.
Have you thought about partnering with Black Trinity Church? They base their own pantry. They give out food boxes. They actually have a location.
Really, well, I'm sure they, they're inundated, but we have nine years there, and we have, you know, we're next to a housing that, a huge development of lower-income housing. And a lot of our people come from there. They walk there because they have the transportation.
The civic center is closer to the housing.
The Trinity is like two blocks away.
And the civic center is next door.
And, you know, one of our volunteers has a daughter that she takes to school, so she goes there and back. Then we have the minister's wife walks at the park in the morning, and it makes it nice for her because, you know, she's, these are all volunteers. And so it's a location that, you know, has been, you know, very successful with, you know, watching our pantry and donations, because people come up. We have a school that comes and donates, and they like their students to come and, you know, put their stuff out. I've had actually kindergarten students and the other ones come up, and they put them in there, and, you know, it's just, it's kind of like tradition now, I think. But that room is ample for us. We don't need anything bigger. It's got its own door, and, you know, we even, you know, I don't know, I'm just gonna...
Okay, I, I think we've had that discussion. We need, we need a motion, or it's gonna die for the lack of motion.
I make the motion that we table this so that we can explore all options, listen to the employees, talk to the stands, so that we can find a solution. You know, at one point, Hansville's free reduced lunch rate was 79.1%. It's one of the highest in Coleman County. So the need is definitely here.
Well, it might be another year. It might be another year before we can get LP out there. They've waited a year for this.
We've got, we've got a motion on the, on the floor.
And I think that if we could come to a solution, that would benefit everyone. We've all seen people getting food out. We've put food in ourselves. It's a need the community has. We just need to find a way to make it work for everyone.
We have a motion on the floor. I have to, I have to honor that and ask for a second. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, a second. To table this. All of those in favor, letting them say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So we will...
I want to say this, though. I've been listening to both sides. And you gotta be, it's sort of like being a judge. You gotta make one decision one way or the other. I understand the safety aspects of it. And bless you, you're doing God's work, you're feeding the hungry. My, how my heart goes out to you for doing this, and your volunteers. But we gotta make some kind of a hard decision on this. And it's not easy.
Thank you. It's almost like a key installment decision.
Yeah.
And it's with the baby. I mean, what, what you want to do for us. Yeah, it's definite that we need the food pantry. We have, everybody knows Hansville is one of the poorest in the county. Or unfortunately, yeah.
Okay, well, it will be on the agenda for the next meeting. We'll continue to work to see if we can maybe possibly resolve some of these issues and maybe work together to try to come up some kind of plan that will, will satisfy everyone, so.
And I invite everybody here to visit us at the library. Our doors are open to you.
Okay, we don't have any reports from staff tonight. You have your bank account balance sheet in your packet. Also, you have your 2025 third quarter budget versus actual expenditures and revenue. You also have your public works by monthly job detail report in your packet. Anything else from the council?
I would like to thank the Civitank Club. We were holding a political forum the other night. It went really well, and it was well planned, and I wanted to publicly thank them.
Yeah, I want to say, if you hadn't noticed, Bulldog Lane's been paved. They did a great job on that up there. The school really appreciates that. And I just want to thank the superintendent and the county board for working with us. We shared the cost in that, and we appreciate them, you know, helping us, helping us with that, because that is a city, city street. And so we appreciate the county board for co-opting with that. As far as announcements go, municipal election, August the 26th, that'll be held here at City Hall. And the civic center, depending on where you register to vote. Also, on the 26th, that same day, keep in mind, the District 11 election is also gonna be held, but you'll go to the senior building at CWA Park to vote for District 11. So you either go there and vote, or come here, and then come here or go there, whichever you, you know, choose to do. Just keep in mind that to vote for District 11, you have to go to the senior building at CWA Park. Also, work session is August 28th at 5:00 PM. Council meeting immediately following. And then on Tuesday, September the 2nd, at 12:00 PM, we will meet here for, to canvass the election results. This will be to examine the actual election results. Now, do I need to say anything else about that? This is mandated by law that we come, and we will actually canvass and certify, I guess, the, the actual results from the municipal election. So we'll not have another meeting until after, after the election. So everybody just come out and, come out and do your part and vote. Anything else from the council? I hear a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, the minutes, minutes, yeah, yeah, sorry. Need to approve the minutes from...
Motion, we approve the minutes of July 24th.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes, and also have a second on that. All of those in favor, letting them say aye. Any opposed? Mine's have it. Now, motion to adjourn.
Take a motion, we adjourn.
A second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All of those in favor, letting them say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.